Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No need for roll call. Everybody's present. Full business, approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of July 3, 2025 are provided for review. So I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 3, 2025, as amended to correct the time we returned from the second executive session, which was 8:08 PM.
A move.
Second. I have a motion and a second call roll.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Epstein.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda tonight? No takers. Presentations. Leavenworth County Port Authority, LCPA education campaign. The LCPA, in collaboration with Leavenworth County Development Corporation, or the LCDC, has launched a county-wide education campaign to raise awareness about the importance of sustained investment in economic development. And Greg Katz will be presenting to the council.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. It is so great to see all these people show up for economic development. Just amazed. You take the advantages when you can, I guess. My name is Greg Cause. I'm a volunteer for the Leavenworth County Port Authority. I also sit on the board for the Leavenworth County Port Authority, along with your representative, Dan Clemmons. I also have with me Harlan Russell with LCDC, David Schrader, he was there, oh, right there. David's a member of the Board for the Port Authority, Lisa Dodd, who is part of the administration, Jeremy Greenmeyer, who is past president for LCDC, who else do I miss? I think that's it. So I got some backups. So what we wanted to do was come to you guys very quickly, a very quick presentation. We're getting ready to start an education campaign to let people know what Leavenworth County Development Corporation, what Leavenworth County Port Authority do. We don't do a real good job of telling people what we do. We're so busy trying to get businesses into Leavenworth County that we don't go out and people don't know. There's been some people show up, like at the county commission meeting, saying, well, I don't know why we have a port authority. We don't have a port. Well, obviously, we're not doing a very good job of explaining who we are, why we're important in what we do. So this campaign is to try to address some of that and try to educate the public and possibly some of the elected officials that are new to their position. We wanted to get this information in front of you, at least give you a knowledge of what's coming up, so that if you hear something about it, yeah, I've heard about it, I know what they're doing. Maybe you don't know the details and everything, but you know that there is something going on. Unfortunately, a lot of the work that we do can't be put in the paper because of non-disclosure agreements. Most companies, when they come, when they're looking for Leavenworth County or businesses, they don't want it in the paper. They want to do it very discreetly for obvious reasons. So a lot of what we do, we use project names, which doesn't mean a lot to a lot of people, but that's the way the, how we do it. What we need to come up with, too, is a steady funding. We've struggled with Leavenworth County, who has been a major funder for us, that our funding used to be, a long time ago, $350,000, $375,000 a year. Now we're down to $25,000 to $75,000 for this year, maybe. And each year, as they trim their budget, they're trimming our budget. So eventually, if we don't find some steady funding, we're going to eat into our reserves and there will not be anything left. So that's another reason for, to do it. When you look at industrial parks now, it used to be, you'd put up a 10,000-square-foot spec building, you'd build an 80-acre industrial park, and life was good. As you guys are seeing, that's not what the market is today. The market is more in the 300- to 500-acre parks with big developments. So to do something in that size, you know, we're probably talking north of $25 to $30 million to do that. Lot of money. Big investment. You know, it can be bonded. It could, money could be borrowed. Port Authority can borrow money. They can sell bonds. But obviously, in order to do that, you have to have a steady stream of funding. So the campaign is going to focus on three areas: the value of economic development, transparency and accountability, and building trust and support. And we need to build the trust between ourselves, elected official, and the public, that although we're volunteers, we're not in it for our own good. We're in it for the good of the community. And I guess selfishly, I pay a lot of taxes in Leavenworth County, and I don't want to pay more taxes than any of you do. I want to see my taxes go down. And that's why I'm doing this, is trying to get my taxes to go down. So we'll show, we need to show how that's going to reduce everyone's taxes. There's two steps to the campaign. The first was to do a polling campaign and just poll people and say, what do you know about economic development? What do you think about them? You know, would you support funding them more? The second step is an education campaign. Basically, after the first step, we found out we definitely needed the second step. So first step, what it told us, we did traditional polling, we did digital surveys, one-on-one meetings with stakeholders, key people in the community. Pretty much, what they told us was, we like economic development, but we don't want to pay for it. Welcome to your world. I want more services, but don't raise my taxes to do it. So we kind of heard the same thing. Taxes, taxes, taxes. That's the big thing we hear, similar to what you guys are hearing. So no, no big surprises there. The goals for the campaign, there's six parts. The first is to strengthen community engagement, get people involved so they know what we do. We want to address tax concerns, communicate economic benefits clearly. We want to tailor marketing to the people we're talking to. So if we're talking to someone that lives in eastern Kansas, they may not understand why a development in Lansing, Kansas, will help them. We need to educate them to let them know how, that they pay Leavenworth County taxes. If Lansing brings in more tax dollars, that brings in more tax dollars for Leavenworth County that would lower their taxes in essence. So basically, rising waters raises all ships. So we need to convince people and teach people why that is true. We want to demonstrate, let's see, demonstrate economic efforts to improve infrastructure, transportation, highlight strategic business attraction efforts, and then we obviously are going to have some negative perceptions. So we need to address those perceptions. We need to anticipate what the questions are going to be and have the proper answers for those questions. This is a rough schedule, timeline of where we're at. We did our survey back in February. We've been developing the frequently asked questions. Press release that is scheduled to go out on Monday after we've talked to you. We've already spoken with Baser, Tongonoxi, City of Leavenworth, Leavenworth County. I was going to talk to you on July 3, but I decided that I'd rather go to the lake, so I'm a volunteer. So once we get through this, and we'll start rolling stuff out, this process will be going on for six to nine months, and it's going to be somewhat of a fluid process. If we see questions coming up that we weren't anticipating, we may change directions to try to address the current needs. This is just a graph that kind of shows what the funding from Leavenworth County has been. Like I said, it used to be like $350,000. It's dropped down to 300, and then you can see what it's done the last couple of years. This coming year, for '26, the budget talks. I don't know if they're going to fund us at all. They're dead set on revenue neutral, and I guess we're an easy target to help achieve that. This is a copy, which is in your packet, of the press release that will be released on Monday. Feel free to read that at your leisure. We have developed a list of frequently asked questions. Those should be in your packet, too. If there's questions that you come up with that you don't think we've addressed, which there probably will be, feel free to reach out to Lisa Hack, myself, or anyone in the LCDC or the Port Authority office. This is just an example of some of the graphics that we're going to use on social media. Again, they're probably going to change a little bit and be steering more towards the questions that are, were being asked. So kind of in conclusion, just a couple of things that we feel we need to get switched. Right now, in Leavenworth County, 90% of the real estate taxes are funded by residential, by rooftops. 10% by others. We feel that needs to get closer to 70, 30. Obviously, we may not get lower than that. Shawnee County, I believe, 60, 40. But with all the government property we have, it's going to be hard to get that down, probably below 70. But we think there's still room that we can get some of the income coming from industrial manufacturers and those types of businesses. We need to bring more tax dollars to counties and cities, because instead of you guys sitting here figuring out how you're going to cut, I want to bring more money to you to bring more income and work on the other side of the equation. I think that's more productive. I think you can provide more services and serve your citizens better that way. Right now, just rough numbers, and I'm within 5%, but if we have $120 million industrial development occur in Leavenworth County, that would, that could, I say could, lower the county mill rate by one mil, if the county so chose to do that. So keeping that $120 million in mind, if I brought in a $3.5 billion or $4 billion development, I could wipe out Leavenworth County's mill rate, if they so chose. Now, will they do that? I don't know. I would hope that they would give some of that back, but I don't know if they'll give it all back or not. But that's how we can try to get the taxes down, by bringing that type of investment. And that number, like I said, the $120 million, that's based off of last year's taxes, what Bob Weber has told me, and kind of what I figured, and looking at like what Tongonoxi's getting from Hills. When Hill starts paying full, their full taxes, they'll be funding 30% to 35% of Tongonoxi's budget. So, big number, big numbers. We're going to experience a lot of growth, whether we want it or not. Just where we're located, everything else that's going on in Kansas City, I'm sure a lot of you have heard that the end of May, Unified Government, Kansas City, Kansas endorsed a proposal to establish a 550-acre business park for a $12.6 million, billion-dollar data center, billion-dollar. So if I could get half of that in Leavenworth County, can you imagine what that would do for our taxes? It was in the Business Journal last week, Port KC is considering incentives for a $100 billion data center. $100 billion. That's a lot of zeros behind there. Its development is coming. You know, we're talking Royals, Chiefs. You know, if the Chiefs go to the legends, what's that going to do for Leavenworth? What development's going to spur off of that? So I guess we, I think we need to be prepared for it and try to address it and direct it the way we want it. Currently, there's some very, very large tracts of ground south of Tongonoxi that are available for sale, for sale, and you don't see those tracts very often. Someone could buy that track and do a very, very large development. Will it happen? Who knows? But the ground's there. You know, these data centers, and I keep harping data centers, but they cost a lot of money, they take a lot of ground, and they pay a lot of taxes. They like the Midwest because we've got a lot of ground, our ground is reasonably priced, we have power, we've got good power, and we've got water for cooling. So we've got a lot of the things they need. So I mean, it would be lovely to get one of those. I don't know if we will or not, but there's a lot of things, good things like that that are happening. So, you know, economic development, you know, Hill's pet farm, I think it probably took three years to get that thing going. It takes time. It's nothing that's going to happen in a month or two. So you've got to keep plugging away. You've got to keep, keep at it to get something. So really, that's all I have to say. I mean, we ask for, you know, you review the materials. We ask for your support. You know, when people ask what it is, if it's worth it. With that, I'll try to answer any questions. If I can't answer them, I've got people in the back that will try to answer them, too.
Can you go back a few slides to that graph?
Sure.
Right there?
Yep.
At the time that the funding started going down, is that because of the market shift? Or is that because they weren't getting their return on investment, or because they were doing revenue neutral at that point? Or why did, why did the funding go down and go down that much?
Revenue neutral. They were trying to stay revenue neutral, is what I understand. At that time, also, they hired Tom Cole. They were going to do some of their own economic development and try to do it on their own. And there's been, City of Leavenworth has tried it. I think maybe Lansing's tried it. It just, it hasn't worked out. You put so much money into one person, and then that person could be here a year, two years, and walk away, and you basically lost everything you did. You know, with LCDC, yeah, we've got a staff of three, so if one left, we've still got two others. But we've got all the volunteers that are giving their time, that knows what's going on, too. So we've got some continuity.
Is this, this graph, is this county figures only?
Yes. And this does not count what you guys give to LCDC.
Well, that's my next question. What, what kind of bite you're going to put us for next budget cycle, because we're working our budget now. What are you going to ask?
That's going to be a question, I, I'm kind of with the Port Authority, but I think probably their ask is going to be similar to what it has been in the past. It's not going to increase.
Okay.
Now, at some point, we may, you know, if we change our scope of what we're doing, we're doing more, we may come talk to you and say, hey, you know, if we do that, are you willing to contribute anymore? But obviously, there would have to be more benefit for the, for the cost, too, I would think.
Yeah, there'd have to be more benefit for us.
Sure.
What do we get for bang for our dollars?
Right.
What I'm looking at. Okay. Thank you.
Really, I think as part of your campaign, one thing that you probably would like to do is show at least everybody in the county how much you've brought in as far as return on investment and could decrease the county taxes, because we don't have that information.
Right.
I mean, we wouldn't mind going to a, you know, a commission, county commission meeting and saying, well, hey, you just pulled in another $118 million. Like, why are you coming here? Mill levy, flat, right? Or increase it by one. But we don't have that information.
Right. Well, and I'm sitting here trying to think a little bit, too, that...
I mean, if the pro is it helps the entire county in that it brings more money to the county, right, and they can lower taxes, well, we would like to maybe put heat on that.
Right.
That's, if there's truth there, right? I mean...
I, I agree with you. I mean, as a citizen of Leavenworth County...
Yeah.
I, I'm all on board.
I like the Hill Petri thing. I'm not sure how many people are aware of that, the financial contributions to, to the city. Maybe take some of your other projects and make some kind of graph or chart and say, hey, this is, this is what we did, and here's the benefits. You know, get it a little bit more detailed.
Yeah.
I think would benefit.
Okay. No, I think that's a good idea. And I think trying to put numbers to it, too.
Yeah. Instead of just saying, well, we did A, B, C, and D.
Right.
Well, when you did A, B, C, and D, what was the benefit to the county?
Right. That's a good idea.
Just a suggestion.
Both, all those are good suggestions. That's what we want.
Anybody else have anything for Greg? All right. Well, thank you.
And if you really want to pick on somebody, pick on the guy on the end down there, too.
Okay. On the end one.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, new business. Public hearing ordinance 1134 Riverbend Heights RHID. City Council voted to conduct a public hearing in accordance with KSA 125245 to consider the establishment of an RHID and the adoption of the Associated Development Plan Agreement for Riverbend Heights. The development plan creates Riverbend Heights RHID covering approximately 146 acres, southwest McIntyre Road, and 130, and 131st Street, and anticipates the development of approximately 406 single-family homes. Under the agreement, the developer fronts all of the infrastructure costs and is repaid only from new property tax growth inside the district. For the first 15 years, 80% of what the increment is captured for reimbursement. And starting in year 16, the capture steps down each year, 75, 70, 65, 60, until year 20. So the city's share of new taxes steadily rises over the back end of the term. Reimbursements are further limited by hard cap, no more than $52,500 per finished lot, and never more than $21.892 million total. So before we open a public hearing, prior to that, I'm going to let the developer come up and, are you planning on that, I hope? And at least let the public know what the changes have been made to the project.
Josh, may I go over there?
Thank you all very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. For those of you who have not had the pleasure of being in person, my name is Chris Colson from AdAstra Development, developer of the proposed Riverbend Heights subdivision in Lansing. I'm here tonight with Carolyn Elsnerman from AdAstra, and Erica Covey, as well as my counsel, Joe Oaks from Postinelli. Why I'm here tonight? As you know, in April, we requested this body to decline our petition at that time, so we can get a better handle on and meet with the other taxing jurisdictions to make sure that everyone is on the same page, investing in this community and investing in this development. We feel in the last three months, we've done just that. We've met with community members, as well as taxing jurisdictions, held here, held open discussions with same, and we feel like we're in a good position here now with the current proposal in front of you tonight. As the mayor mentioned, we decided to come back after many, many discussions with those bodies, as well as your staff, who I must compliment, they've been great to work with, and they are, through about a year of negotiations is where we came up where we are tonight. We decided to, from hearing from, from the bodies, that they wanted more skin in the game as we, as we went on throughout the development and throughout the tool of RHID, they wanted the captured amount to lower specifically over the last five years. So we decided that after year 15, starting year 16, we'd lower that 5% up until the 20th year, which now we're at, we're at 55% instead of 80%. The benefit to the city is that we project over the first 15 years of the RHID tool, this city would receive about $1.3 million of revenue, tax revenue. Over the last five years, you would also receive about $1.3 million of tax revenue. That, for a total of about $2.6 million of revenue throughout the process, as opposed to without development, $100,000 of revenue. Without the tool, the deal just doesn't work. We won't be going forward with Riverbend Heights. So we're, tonight, we're here to decide if this is the development you guys want to see in Lansing. Lansing needs housing. In 2023, Lansing had a housing study completed that said they need 560 new housing units before 2030. Here we are in 2025, and we've had about five. I cannot produce 560 housing units before 2030. If this body finds it in themselves to pass tonight's resolution, we will begin work immediately, and at best, we will have homes built with residents in them in 2027. So the time is now to move forward. The time is now for growth for Lansing. I've heard the community here, it's a very passionate community. You guys should be very proud. We've heard comparisons to sister cities in the area, like Baser, and Baser is just geographically advantaged. And we have heard, well, it's only 10 to 15 miles down the road, which is the answer to the question, because it is 10 to 15 miles down the road and closer to Kansas City. So to compete with that, we need to implement the RHID tool that has been implemented in so many communities around Leavenworth County, or Tongonoxi specifically, as well as around the Kansas City metro and elsewhere in Kansas. So just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Wanted to introduce myself, for those who haven't met me, and here to answer any questions about the project and any specific questions related to the development agreement. I'll hand over to Joe Oaks, my counsel here tonight.
Any of you have any questions?
How many houses a year will you have ready for market?
We anticipate developing about 60 lots a year, and the houses will follow just after. So I would say between 50 and 60 a year, beginning in 20, construction will start in late '26 and complete in '27 with the first phase, and then 60 a year culminating in 2033 for 406 approximately before 2033.
And how many years before we see all 406?
All 406, 2033 is when I anticipate.
2033?
Yeah.
Which area are you going to start on first? What color?
Yellow. Yellow would begin, yeah, the beginning. And yeah, we've heard the community, we respect the community. We know there are neighbors there, and our goal isn't to detract from the area. Our goal is to add value, both monetarily as well as, as a community. And, and we've tried to listen, we've, we've tried to amend the development plan here. You can see we've added about a 200, I think a 270-foot buffer on the east side, which with the topography of the land, should shield those residents on the east side of 131st from, if not the entire development, a great deal of it, because it does rise up there during that buff, during that, that berm, and then falls back down to the rest of the development. And, and this will be hashed out as well in the planning and zoning meeting, if we get to that point as well. So, long way to go with that.
You want to address the issue of basements?
Basements, heard a lot about basements. Really, the market will decide what product goes where. There will be basements here. I can tell you that. I don't know how many. The home builders that we have relationships with, they do build basements. The topography of this site lends itself to daylights, walkouts, and full basements, and we anticipate there being a mixture. Whether it's, if it's half the development, I'm going to say probably not, but I would say somewhere between 30 and 50%. I anticipate needing basements. But again, I'm just a lot developer. We deal with the home builders. If we have a project, we forward, we negotiate with them immediately, get a contract to, to sell the houses, and they decide what goes in. But based on the topography, based, what I know about the cost to develop, after I do, finish the lot, do the houses, basements are sometimes cheaper based on the topography and of the soil and stuff like that, so.
Well, but I think, I think one of the misconceptions out there is that there won't be any, and there won't be available.
Right. And that's, looking at the development we've done in Spring Hill, that's what is in Spring Hill. It's slab-on-grade. That is deal with Roush Coleman. They're, they were a regional builder out of Arkansas, and they 100% strictly did slab-on-grade. Never did a basement, never will, because they don't exist anymore. They've sold to Lennar. Lennar is one of the top two home builders in the country with D.R. Horton. Both those home builders are now in the region. They have been gone since 2008. They're back now. We hope they stay around for a while. But both Lennar and D.R. Horton, as well as other national home builder and regional home builders, all do the basements.
What's the cost point for the homes? Are our teachers, firemen, and police officers, are they going to be able to afford these homes?
Yeah. Again, when, when you're competing with other, other areas like Baser, you've got to, you're competing against geography, so you've got to price yourself to be, to be competitive. And to do that, we don't anticipate homes selling to $400,000. You've got to get them as close to 300 as you can. In Spring Hill, where we will start at $289, that's been a year and a half ago. Our goal is to get them at or around 3 to 320 is the price point we, we hope to see. And that's, again, that's based on lot prices. With RHID tool, we're able to sell the lots at a cheaper price, below market, and wholesale to these builders, who can build quickly, inexpensively, for quality homes. And then they're able to sell for a lesser price because they have less in the lot. For these builders, they just, whatever the lot price is, it's 5X is typically the number we kind of see. So we try to get in their loads and figure that out, and estimate we can try to get them in there to sell with at 3 to 320.
How do you decide where to get your building materials from? Will you be buying anything from, like Lansing lumber here locally?
I am the lot developer, not the home builder. We don't know who the home builder's going to be yet. We can encourage them to, but we don't have a, we don't have a project yet, so we don't have a deal yet with the builder. But yeah, I mean, obviously, energy prices, the shipping, and is a lot of the cost, so I'm guessing they would get whatever they could from, locally.
House sizes are going to be 1,300, 1,600?
13 to 2, yeah, sorry, 1,300 to 2,000 on the high end.
Oh, it'll be that bit. All right.
Yeah, I mean, not all of them, but there will be some on the higher end. Yeah, I mean, not all of them, but there will be some on the higher end.
Is any commercial land in amongst this project?
Not, not on this piece. I'm sure you guys, I know you guys have seen neighboring developments that have a commercial industrial aspect, this one does not.
All right, more questions? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I need a motion to open the public hearing to consider the establishment of a reinvestment housing incentive district and the adoption of the associated development plan for Riverbend Heights.
Move.
A motion and a second, call roll.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Karveloski?
Yes.
Okay, before we open it up to the public, I'm just going to remind everybody, I'm going to give you three minutes. I know most of you personally now who are attending tonight, so I, myself and the governing body have heard a lot of the opposition to this development. But I, you know, if you could just keep it to three minutes so we can get everybody in here who wants to talk tonight, and I appreciate if you'd be cordial, especially to the city staff and the governing body, kind of keep the comments cordial. Okay, so I will, I will, you want, go ahead and say what you want to say, Kevin, real quick.
Yeah, the last time we did this, it was my, my first rodeo, and while, as a citizen, I do share a lot of your views and comments, but while I'm sitting in this chair, my personal views come secondary to the responsibilities of this chair, to the citizens, citizens of Lansing and to the city itself. So while I do agree, I do have other responsibilities as well as everybody else, though.
All right, thanks, Kevin. All right, so who would like to be first to speak tonight? Please come forward, state your name and address, sign in, April, please.
It's April Cromer.
This is April Cromer. I think you know my address now, too. Good evening, I'm April Cromer, I live on 131st Street in Leavenworth. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I'm not speaking as a credentialed expert, but I'm a concerned citizen who deeply loves the community. My concern is, has nothing to do with the location, it has to do with the strain that this will have on the school district. Over the past months, I have met more neighbors than ever before, and here's what I've learned. People are awake, and they're not okay with what's going on. I stood before you with facts, petitions, data, legal concerns, exposed serious flaws in the original AdAstra feasibility study. We didn't manipulate the numbers, we used their own formula, plugged in accurate values, and proved the math does not hold up. This should have been caught from day one. I've spoken to legislators in Topeka, and what I've discovered is very eye-opening. The very people pushing for Riverbend Heights RHID also helped lobby for SB 17 that allow taxpayer dollars to build private developments. That's not public service, it's a private interest using public money. While our school district should be focused, laser-focused on education, it has spent more time talking about housing developments. Where are our priorities in that? People in Leavenworth County want one thing, real tax relief, and every year, property taxes keep climbing up. It's easy to blame Topeka, but let's be honest, you have the power, you have the home rule authority, which means you decide whether to ease the burden or make it worse. But let's talk about the RHID. It didn't come from the community, it came from special interest groups, lobbyists. And once we raised concerns, I personally started getting private invitations to meet with people, attempts to reform or reframe the narrative, but let's call it what it is, it's a shiny new version of a really bad idea. They're calling it attainable housing now, and now pitching a new tax split. But let's be real, it won't even come close to what the school district needs. It costs around $17,000 a year to educate a student USD 469. Under the RHID, we get back $5,611 from the statutory 20 mills. That's not a shortfall, it's a financial canyon. And here's the truth, every one of us pays taxes in USD 469. This is not a city issue, it's a community issue. Every taxing entity, every taxpayer will feel the consequences. And no matter what the developer's attorney says, per student fundee is set by the law, not by promises. Let me leave you with this. Matthew 1626, "What would it profit a man if he gains the whole world and forfeits his soul?" Please, please, do what's right tonight, not what's easy, not what benefits a few, but what benefits and honors those that elected you to do what you are up there doing. So thank you for your service, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, April.
John Redden, 24170, 131st Street. And actually, my questions are directed to Chris Colson. So I'm going to, sorry, may I just rotate this?
You address the council.
Sir, you're to address the council, not, not the public, not individuals.
Yeah, he's not, he's not the governing body, though.
All right.
You can ask us.
I don't think you can speak for him. Okay, but the original RHID resolution document stated that the total infrastructure cost for Riverbend Heights is estimated to be $27,144,166. That's his number. The total project value is estimated to be between 130 million and 150 million. So you see that the infrastructure cost represents, the cost which Mr. Colson is responsible for, is approximately 20% of the total project value of the completed subdivision. After buying the land and installing the infrastructure, AdAstra will sell the improved lots to the house builder for a profit. The house builder then owns the land, builds the foundation, frames the house, install the roof, windows, doors, siding, HVAC, painting, landscaping, et cetera. And during the 20-year RHID period, AdAstra will receive all of the eligible RHID funds, which were generated based on the final appraised value of the new houses minus the existing appraised value of the land. Yet AdAstra will perform only approximately 20% of the work that achieved the final appraised value of the house. The house builder who performs approximately 80% of the work and that achieve the final appraised value of the house receives no RHID funds. So let me ask you, do you think it's fair that AdAstra receives all the RHID funds when they only perform approximately 20% of the work that achieve the final appraised value of the subdivision? No, it's not fair. Now, okay, moving on. A second, a senior representative of Roush Coleman, that's the builder that AdAstra has teamed up with on the Spring Hill development, recently advised me that the developer always makes a profit when he sells the improved lots to the house builder. He also said the typical cost for a developed lot in the Kansas City area is $85,000. Just a few, just a couple more minutes.
I'm going to cut you off, I'm sorry, John, but we get your point.
All right. He's making a profit, he's getting paid twice. Once is when he sells a lot to the, to the house builder, and second, for the RHID funds. He shouldn't get paid twice.
Surely we have. Mr. Tom Diles, please come forward.
Tom Diles, 12500, Goldwood, and I'm going to try and turn the temperature down a little bit. I think these things become adversarial in a hurry. You've heard Mr. Colson go through the numbers, you've heard John get a stab at him. To summarize, I mean, we're talking about, AdAstra gets about 8 million, and the city gets about 1.8 out of your tax revenue. That's the way the split will go, and then you've been down through what happens the last few years. The question that I asked the first time I was up here was, what are we buying as taxpayers? What are you buying as a city council? And what you're buying is the incentive for the developer to go in and do the improvements necessary to build affordable housing, what he terms to be affordable housing. That's, that's the cost of it. I'm not going to sit here and regurgitate numbers at you, you've got them all in front of you. But I do want to take some time, first off, to thank Tim Vandal, because Tim sat down with me on Tuesday morning, and Tru led me through how to go and review the RHID and what it means. And I think we need to think strategically more, and I think that's, I'm glad the LCD C got up and made their pitch, we need to have a much more strategic approach to what we're doing, and I don't see that happening the way we're doing it now. I think I have a clearer understanding of the relationship between the city and the developer, and that the city now becomes, if you pass this, an interested third party. You don't really have a dog in the fight other than to collect your money. At Tim's suggestion, I drove down to Spring Hill today, and I took a look at Wizwell Farms, which is the Roush Coleman thing here. Now, it's not Rock Creek, but it's not a slum either. I guess, and I can certainly be corrected, but I think there's probably about 150 structures built down there, is that somewhere close? Okay, and it looks like there's probably roads being dug for another 100 or so. There's a lot of commercial development around it. If any of you've ever been to Spring Hill 30 years ago, it's a different town, and strategically, that's what Tim and I talked about Tuesday morning, how do you make that happen in Lansing? That's what LCD C is talking about. So I want to be real careful talking about money, you're going to know about money. You guys have to decide whether or not it's a good deal for Lansing. Now, I'm not lawyer, I've told you that before, the only thing more dangerous than my legal opinion is my medical opinion, but in 1978, the Kansas Supreme Court ruled in Golden versus Oldland Park that a city, Planning Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, when it's making policy, has basically, yep, all right, it's a legislative function, but it's quasi-judicial. And what I would ask you to do is talk to your lawyer when you're in your deliberation phase of this, about the golden factors, there are six of them, Josh can tell you what they are. Those should enter into what you're looking at out here on McIntyre and 131st.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Mayor, council members, my name's Scott Tenner, I live at 13697 McIntyre, and the pin's been stolen. You got it.
Scott, I stole it. You can't trust that army of yours.
All right, you got a fresh clock?
So I just want to add on to what Tom was saying here. I too have been down to Spring Hill, and I've noticed that there's a drastic difference between where that development is located versus where this proposed development is located. It's located near the Kansas 7 Highway, not in the middle of a neighborhood, already a pre-existing neighborhood, it's already on the edges there. When I'm down there looking at things, nice little homes, you know, I'm not going to argue with that, but the fencing, the six-foot privacy fencing, in every other, in every backyard there creates a barrier. You can't see in them, who knows what's in the back of those yards, what trash is being back there, you just can't see anything, and there's, there's just six-foot privacy fencing all over the place. It looks horrible after that fencing gets built. In relation to what Tom was saying about the golden factors, these golden factors are codified into Lansing's Unified Development Ordinance. Number one on this list of factors is to consider the character of the existing neighborhood surrounding the proposed development. Number two is the zoning use and compatibility of the development and nearby properties. And number four on the list is the extent to which the change will detrimentally affect nearby properties. Why is the city not following the UDO and forcing this high-density development smack dab into the middle of the existing rural neighborhood? The proposed Riverbend Heights is completely out of character and will conflict with the existing rural neighborhood zoning and will detrimentally affect nearby properties. The tri-party annexation agreement says, "City deserves to annex the property and to ensure that the development of the property is compatible with surrounding land uses." This is not true. The small lot, high-density development is not compatible with the surrounding land, rural land uses in larger-sized parcels. It is obviously, it is obvious that the high-density Riverbend Heights project will conflict with the character of the rural neighborhood and will detrimentally affect our properties. Why is the city intending to force this development upon our community when it is not compatible with the character of our neighborhood? Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Ryan Burden, I live at 13068 McIntyre Road. Also notice in the annexation, this is to, this development will provide benefits to the city that may otherwise be unattainable, increasing the vitality of the city's economy and expanding its local tax base. Is that really the truth? Over the now 15-year span, are we willing to bear the burden of increased taxes for development that's almost two miles out of where I would say Lansing begins? I understand it's in the city limits, but this is closer to the Legends, to some stores than up here. I shop in Legends, I shop in Leavenworth, I would expect these people probably going to go to the Legends. My question is, are we going to bear the burden to develop help homes for Wyndham County? Or are we going to focus on what we can do in Lansing to build up the core of the city in order to make this city a destination that's outside of the main metropolitan area? How can we do that not using the RHID? We need to strengthen our city core, and this, this density of housing would be perfect in the city. Developments outside of kind of the built environment should follow those golden factors and kind of follow more or less what's around in the surrounding areas. In this area, it's one acres, more, more or less two and a half and larger. So if there's any development on this property, I would stress that these should be two-and-a-half-acre lots without using the RHID. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, gentlemen, Paul Cromer, 131st Street, Leavenworth County. Mr. Kirby, we weren't misinformed, the original pitch for Riverbend was slab-on-grade, sir, so no one was misinformed, it was originally slab-on-grade, no basements available. A major pillar of the RHID application process is to demonstrate to the Kansas Department of Commerce through a housing needs analysis that a shortage of quality housing exists and will continue to persist. We all know that the Delaware Ridge, Epic Estates, and Monroe Manor developments are also all moving forward, but at a different paces. The statement that a shortage of housing will continue to persist in Lansing, when in fact, the city is also looking forward to implementing the Delaware Ridge, Epic Estates, and Monroe Manor, and other projects, is also less than forthright. Is the Lansing going to terminate Delaware Ridge, Epic Estates, and Monroe Manor developments so that Riverbend Heights can qualify for the RHID status? With those other developments, there's not a need for this. It was explained to the community that AdAstra withdrew from the original RHID proposal so it could better explain the RHID benefits to the Lansing School Board. Meanwhile, it is noted that the estimated Riverbend Heights tax revenue increased from 21.9 million in the original feasibility study to 27.3 million in the latest feasibility study. At the 80% RHID tax diversion to AdAstra jumped from 17.5 million in the original feasibility study to 21.8. feasibility study to $21.8 million in the latest feasibility study. How reliable are your estimates? Why did the RHID tax diversion to AdAstra increase from $17.5 to $21.8 million? I've got about a minute left. A lot of people have been asking how much AdAstra is going to make from this. We saw the amount that they're going to get from tax revenue. How much are they going to get from selling the development? He told you 50 to 60 houses a year. By state statute, they can't build any more than 50. So when he says from 50 to 60, he's kind of being truthful to you. But then he also says, "Well, I'm just developed a lot," that the builders are going to, and guess what the builders are going to tell you? We can only do 50 per the statute. So there's a lot of stuff that's not on top of the level here, and there is a lot of, Mr. Kirby, there is a lot of misinformation going on because people don't even know what the heck is going on. Read the statutes. This is not a good deal for Lansing. It's not a good deal for any of us. I'm just glad we have the Port Authority looking out for our best interest. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, gentlemen. Most of you know I've never spoken three minutes in my life. I do everything I can do to do that. I cut my five-minute speech down from the school board to three, and I think I can get through it in 3:15. So I'm going to go. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Harlan Russell. I live at 934 Wyndham Drive. I stand before you today as a Lansing taxpayer of 32 years. I speak with nearly 40 years of experience in the site development industry. My comments today reflect my personal perspective. Yes, I was here to support Gray with LCPA and LCDC, but I do not speak for them in my statement here. I'm here to express my support for the RHID program. I believe it's a strategic, time-limited tool that can help spur growth in Lansing and strengthen our community. Let's talk a little bit about the facts. According to the Home Builders Association of Greater Kansas City, Lansing issued 23 building permits since 2018. I talked to Josh yesterday or this morning. His records show 40. I don't think it matters when a community like Basra has issued 722 building permits in that same timeframe. This lack of growth means rising property taxes that are falling almost entirely onto existing homeowners without new housing. There's no broader tax base to share the cost. More homes would help stabilize our budgets and ease burden on current residents. Greg stole my thunder, but in Leavenworth County, 90% of property taxes revenue come from residential properties and 10% from commercial. That imbalance means homeowners carry nearly the entire load. The proposed 400-acre, or 400-home development, and the multifamily development that's been discussed in this body, I believe, offer a chance to revitalize Lansing housing market. That's the payoff pitch here, gentlemen, revitalizing the market and ultimately creating more growth. This incentive is an investment in our future. The RHID program gives incentives to invest in cities like ours where growth has stalled. Importantly, the developer, not the city, bears the risk. They fund the infrastructure upfront. The city does not bond the project. The incentives help offset the risk, allowing the developer to bring more competitive lot prices and attract builders and buyers. If the project doesn't move forward or is unsuccessful, there is no cost to the taxpayers of Lansing. There is no lost revenue. There's no revenue to gain. This isn't a permanent solution, nor should it be. We should see RHID. We should use RHID selectively, perhaps two or three times, for well-vetted and planned projects. If those succeed and attract further development, the incentive has then done its job. We must carefully plan and measure those results along the way. Housing has always been a top concern. Housing affordability is a concern. The previously mentioned 2023 housing study identified three top issues. I got this study off your website. Property taxes, housing cost, lack of availability. We talk about the proposed, single-family homes proposed or start around $300,000. That generally requires a household income of $120,000 to $140,000 to manage those mortgage payments.
You can send that in to me after this.
According to your study... Okay. I just want to say 24% of the residents meet that requirement.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Bill Page. I live at 1101 Sycamore Ridge Drive, Lansing, Kansas, which is about as far away from this development as you can be and still be in Lansing. For that, I'm grateful. Thank you. We often think that there is a linear relationship between the Lansing success and its larger tax base. That's not true. Growth always results, always results in higher taxes, more congestion, and less green space. Overland Park, Olatha, and other nearby Johnson County cities have huge tax bases and huge financial problems, and people there would like to move to Leavenworth County where the cost of housing is significantly less and the ambience of life is more desirable. So what we're creating is something that the people in Olatha are trying to get away from, and we are becoming that by this project. The city of Lansing can be very successful with responsible growth of its tax base or unsuccessful with tremendous growth of its tax base. The focus instead should be on spending only for essential services and hiring only necessary staff so that property taxes are minimized. This is what your constituents want, those people you represent. Nobody's crying out for more tax hikes or anything like that. It's like the federal government now is run out of money, and so you've got to be creative and you've got to start thinking. So why is Lansing pushing so dang hard to install the Riverbend Heights subdivision when it will not yield any tangible benefits to its existing residents? And this next bit here, in his Gettysburg Address, President Lincoln said, "Let us resolve that government of the people, by the people, for the people shall not perish from the earth." So in the few words of Lincoln, he succinctly summarized how any government should function, especially this one. Let's put Lincoln's ideal government at one end of the spectrum and governments like China, Russia, and North Korea on the other end, where it's government of the government, by the government, for the government. Seems to me that Lansing resembles a business that is focusing on profit through tax base rather than a government of the people that functions to benefit its residents. Where is the city of Lansing along the spectrum of good versus bad government? Another way of saying this is, who is benefiting from this development? I'm not. Nobody that lives out there is. The education community hates it. The revenue is not going to be forthcoming to help lower taxes. It's not doing anything that's promised. And rather than...
Appreciate your comment.
...do something good for us, it is going to do something overtly bad for your constituents.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Is there anybody else before we close the public hearing?
Your favorite.
Ah, Janie.
Before I start, though, I want to apologize to you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I think we didn't do that. I was untangling you all, and I'm so sorry. Okay? I'm sorry. Because we all have opinions, and you guys have opinions, and what opinions are after... I did want to make one statement, though, about Tonganoxi. You know, they're putting six-foot fences around every one of those houses out there. My grandson attempted to buy a house out there. They were very close, but when they found out, they didn't qualify because the payment was going to be $2,700 a month. And he makes a lot of money, but they had to lose the property. They couldn't do it, and they were going to go after one of these properties, which I was about to paint. What I wanted to talk to you about was the safety, and we've talked about this before, of McIntyre and 7 Highway. I personally witnessed another accident right there. If you would just, you come on up 7 Highway and you make a right-hand turn at, slow down. Slow down to 45, to 30. See if you can make it around the corner, over that yellow line, not going the ditch. You can't do it, and they do not slow down for you. It's very dangerous. And I happened to stop and talk to a sheriff of Sepulvede one day. He was sitting there. I thanked him for being there because almost nobody outside of our residents drives 35 miles an hour down that street right now. You keep telling us, "Well, you guys got to be ready because we're getting ready to make the highway there." Okay, we make the highway there. Then what happens to all these 400 and some people that are trying to get out on the street, and there's no way to get on 7 Highway, much less get on McIntyre? You're not thinking this through, that, for the safety part of it. Now, I envision a beautiful Lansing. I love Lansing. I picked my house up from the racetrack area and put it in Lansing, for heaven's sake, just right next door because I'm still really on 131st Street. But I know one of these days I'll be, and all my kids have gone to Lansing. But where's your vision for something more than these little 50-foot lots? Come on, guys. I know it's already in the bag, that you've all said you're going to vote for it, but you don't have to. You can change your mind. You can give it a little more time because, really, this has come so fast, even though it's only now, not even a year yet, it's come so fast. Can you please just table it a little while? I'm excited about the idea of possible business coming in. If possible business comes in, that's going to help us a lot. We've got a lot to look forward to. We've got a great community here. Why stop it right now with the idea of having to have these little houses? It's not necessary. But my main thing, what I really was supposed to talk about, was the danger. And Tom suggested one of those over bridges, over 7 Highway. Something has to be done. KDOT, somebody has to come in before this subdivision can go in and tell us how we can make that corner safer. The sheriff's, the deputy that I talked to, he told me that that was the most unsafe street in Lansing, and that the sheriff's department's very concerned about all these new houses coming up here, not knowing what's going to happen. It's going to cause more chaos. That's what's going to happen. Anyway, I'm Janie Stotman, with an N, S in nice. You see, we do this, the smart ones, we do this later so you don't count it in our two minutes.
Hi, guys. I'm Rebecca Mahan, and I live at 13883 McIntyre Road, Lansing, Kansas. And like we talk about affordable housing, are these teachers, are firefighters going to be able to afford the house? The average interest rate on a mortgage is 6.67%. And that's around a, for this price of house, $2,500. That's not including home insurance. That's not including the taxes. Like, I don't know what teacher in this area can afford a $2,500 a month payment on a house, just FYI. And then you have to factor in that there's not going to be any walkability, public transportation. They're going to be able, they're going to need a car. So that's average in the country right now, $745 a month. So you just, that's not including utilities and basic upkeep of your property. So who is this going to be affordable for? I know we need rooftops to expand our tax base, but in the housing study, it mentioned that we needed some houses around $600,000, and we're running out of green space to put those houses. You know, just food for thought there. And then the Monroe Manor was going to be, without the RHID, is going to be 194 single-lot family homes. And I believe if that development goes through, you know, Lansing, there'll be more kids. So if you put both these developments going through, at least that one's not asking for an RHID, a little more steady pace. This one, it will affect the school district, and they don't have much room, much money coming in to fix the problems they already have. And so that's my main concern here. So thank you for your time, guys.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
The 2023 housing needs analysis stated, Lansing needs 168 conventional single-family homes and 168 small-lot homes for a total of 336 units. Riverbend Heights is proposing 417 units on small lots with no conventional homes. The same analysis recommended five houses per acre, but Riverbend Heights is plotted for seven houses per acre. Why is a developer allowed to dictate those pieces of the subdivision when you paid for a housing analysis to give you the advice that was needed? Page 49 of the same analysis states Lansing has a good supply of land within its municipal limits to be developed. These potential sites appear capable of accommodating the land used in Chapter 3 of the analysis. An unusual asset is the city ownership of the strategic town center. Much of this site is available and has significant residential components. Page 60 also states, "This is a natural site for high-density housing. The site is unlikely to generate opposition from neighbors, and the presence of a significant population would be," I can't read my writing, "mutually advantageous to existing and post-commercial and highly compatible with the KC, KCC building." Based on this advice, why do we need an RHID to create this subdivision when you do have the Monroe subdivision coming in with no RHID? So it can be done. Growth is great, but not with an RHID. It's just not the right thing for us, especially as taxpayers. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
23979131st Street. Really don't have a question. I understand that you want development. That's been said, and I'm not trying to use anyone's words, but I think in the meeting in March, you kind of expressed that this is the deal we can get as far as RH, the I mean, that land out there, it's, at the end of the day, it's a commodity, and with your ability to change that, I kind of feel like it makes you stewards of the property. Because if I understand correctly, for this, and it's basically a bond or a loan or a tax or whatever, you have to approve it, the county commissioners have to approve it, and the Board of Education have to approve it. Is that, am I correct on that? That's 20 people. Is that correct?
Not technically.
Pardon me?
It's a pocket approval. If they don't put it on their agenda, it is approved.
Okay. That's basically 20 people. So for, you know, 20-year payback, I guess all I'm asking is, if this is done next year or two years or three years from now or whatever, all I'm asking you is, just don't make long-term decisions on short-term emotions because, you know, once you change the land, you know, there's no take backs. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Chuck Irwin. I live at two-four-two-eight-two, one-hundred-and-twenty-sixth Street, Leavenworth. I work over at the transfer station over here on Gilman and Lansing. This facility is very necessary and appreciated operation in Leavenworth County, but none of, none of you would want this recycle center, transfer station in your neighborhood. If a transfer station were being proposed next to your neighborhood, you would have a right to be upset. The incessant noise and smells would ruin the ambiance in your neighborhood. Yet you all appear to be perfectly fine with the annexation of a portion of our neighborhood, so that four-hundred-and-six, not four-hundred-and-eighteen, four-hundred-and-six fifty-foot-wide lots, where the existing zoning is two-point-five acres per lot, can be constructed to grow the Lansing tax base. An appropriate, an appropriate location for a small-lot Riverbend Heights-type development is someplace in the urban center of Lansing, similar to the Monroe Manor project. But the Ingleheart property, although now part of Lansing, is not urban, it is rural. We like our dark skies, we don't need streetlights, the light pollution from the high-density subdivision would resemble a Walmart parking lot and devastate the quiet ambiance of our rural area. The proposed Riverbend Heights development is surrounded on three sides by Leavenworth County properties whose residents are not part of Lansing. But we pay taxes into, into the Lansing School District and have committed no crime that we should be treated this way. We implore each of you to remember the golden rule, do unto others as you would have them to do unto you. The city may have the legal right to create this subdivision at this location, but does it have the moral right to compromise our area? We are, we ask that you make a distinction between the legal right and the moral right, and then vote no to allow this RHID subdivision.
Wow. That was perfectly timed. I'll get extra credit for that. Okay, where's, there anyone else?
If everybody else is done. Okay, I have a letter from Curtis.
Yeah.
Could we just address a few of the comments that we heard before the hearing is closed?
No, he's the one.
It's public comment. He can speak.
Yeah, I mean, he's addressing questions.
No, 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 no questioning of anyone.
They can't question you, but you can say whatever.
Yeah, absolutely. If you wanna keep me on the same timer, that's just fine, too. I just have a few.
Oh, yeah, you're on the timer.
Yep. Sounds great. Perfect. Just want to address a few very brief comments we heard in public, uh, public comment tonight. First is just, this hearing is just focused on the, on the incentive request, it's not focused on planning, zoning, entitlement. All of those things will come at a later date, that's not the decision before you tonight, so the golden factors do not apply in this specific instance. Second is just school district, impact to the school district. We've, we've heard that a lot. I just want to remind, it's been said already, that that body retains a veto right. We know that our work is, is not done with the school district, nor do we intend to speak for the school district tonight, based on what we've seen from the financial, from their financial advisor to date. We're encouraged that that, that this project will have a positive benefit on them, but as, as others have brought up, brought up tonight, that body does have a very specific veto right that will, if this, if we're fortunate enough to receive approval, will last thirty days after tonight. Last, just two very quick ones again. There was a comment on limitation of, of units per year. That's applicable to Johnson, certain communities in Johnson and Wyandotte County, that's not applicable here. This, this city's under the population threshold by itself, just like in Johnson County, DeSoto's not subject to the same limitation, as is Overland Park or Leitha. Last but not least was kind of the comment that Johnson County communities are running away from this tool and not utilizing it. Quite, quite the contrary. The program's been expanded to apply to all of Johnson County and certain communities in it. We've brought in Upspring Hill, obviously. DeSoto recently passed its first RHID. They are a community that's on the up and up and experiencing some of the rapid growth that I hear this body and folks in here talking about with the Panasonic plant and with all the jobs coming this way. Last, last sort of thought I'll put out here, I thought it was a very timely meeting with, you know, your economic development folks kinda opening it up, talking about the strain on residential taxpayers and the need to bring in more businesses and industry. To do that, you need the bodies to support it, you need the jobs to support it. Right now, I, I think the statistics been said many times before, but eighty percent of your workforce lives outside of the community. We need to get homes to change that. So, that's all I wanted to say tonight. Again, happy to answer any questions if this body has any, otherwise, we'll take a seat.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna let Gene read a letter that was sent to the governing body, and then...
Well, it's a letter from Curtis in Jasmine. I hope I'm saying that right.
You got three minutes, Gene.
That's fine. If somebody else, the printers, wants to read it, that's fine, because it's rather long and extensive, and I don't know if I can do it in three minutes. Lansing City Council, dear councilmen, this letter is in opposition to the establishment of Riverbend Heights District for the purpose of an RHID housing development. Ad asteris lawyer stated at a recent USD four-sixty-nine school board meeting that the projected return on Riverbend Heights development would be twelve percent. They're asking for twenty-year RHID. Let's take a moment to put that in perspective. Historically, the average return of the stock market over ten-year period is ten percent. If you are offered that comparison to any reasonable investor, they would almost certainly take the market, and for good reason. Investing in the stock market requires far less time, fewer logistical hurdles, and creates none of the civic implications or long-term risks that come with public-private development projects. So the question becomes, why should we, the taxpayers and residents, be subsidizing a plan that doesn't even outperform a basic financial index? This is critical, the investors behind this development are not local, they do not live here, they do not raise their families here, they will not be the ones navigating underfunded roads, overburdened schools, or stretched public service. Ask yourself who truly bears the cost of this deal. It's not the out-of-town investors, it's us, the residents, the taxpayers, the families who live with consequences long after the ribbon is cut. This community deserves development, it serves public good, not just private gain. Growth should be smart, sustainable, and rooted in local benefits. Continuously, we, the constituents, are lectured that the growth is required to keep our tax base down. However, at the same time, you, our elected councilmen, as well as city employees, push you bring in tax-averted entities, RHID, KC-KCC, into our town. Just last city meeting, council meeting, three acres of prime commercial property was voted on and approved to be sold to KC-KCC for a mere ninety-five thousand dollars. Below is a list of commercial property currently for sale in Lansing, none of which comes close to the thirty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-seven per acre that the city told, the city sold the property to KC-KCC for. At this point, that property is no longer a part of Lansing's tax base, and the city is no closer to having an answer, as when KC-KCC will be breaking ground on a new facility. And then she has a list of properties, four-hundred North Main Street, one-point-thirty-one acres, going fast, K-seven frontage, JoeCasey.com list at five-hundred-and-ninety-nine K, uh, four-hundred-and-fifty-seven K per acre, fully serviced, B-three zoning, seven-oh-six North Main Street, two-point-ten acres, corner lot on B-ZK seven, listed for three-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand an acre, full off-site utilities, high traffic, thirty-thousand BDP. I have no idea what that means. Five-oh-six North Main, zero-point-two acre, formerly ATM drive-through site, asking a hundred-and-seventy-four-point-nine K, eight-sixty-eight an acre, zone B-three, utilities and sidewalk present. Four-H Road parcel, two-point-two-five acres, land search shows it at a hundred-and-ninety-five K, eighty-six-point-seven K an acre, CB zoning undeveloped, one-one-oh-two, one-twenty-four, and two-oh-two North Main Street, smaller Main Street lots, zero-point-three to zero-point-six-six, ranging from two-hundred-and-twenty-five to three-hundred-and-fifty K. This deep-for-discount sales raises serious questions about how public assets are being... Am I done?
Yeah, if they were here, it would be timed out.
Oh, okay.
But we can put this in the record.
All right.
I mean, I think their points were well-taken.
Thank you.
Okay. Kevin, did you have any other comments?
Yeah, there's a couple things brought up, and one about the taxes. We just went through a budget session where our reserves were dyed-in-to, because we kept the mill rate down and revenue-neutral. And then I see the tax, the chart up there tonight, where funding was reduced because the county went revenue-neutral. Costs go up, and if we don't keep up, then we suffer. And the other thing was, this gentleman said that, what are we gonna get out of it? You and I, probably nothing. But forty years ago, when I moved here, I was all for growth, regardless of what it costs, because when I first moved here and told somebody I was from Lansing, they said, where's that? I said, it's next to Leavenworth. Now, when I say I'm from Lansing, they, they know I'm from Lansing. They don't have to ask where. So growth is part of it.
Yeah, I gotta close. Yeah, I gotta close the public hearing first. I'm sorry.
Move.
You shouldn't, I shouldn't even let you do that. So I need a motion to close the public hearing for establishment of Riverbend Heights RHID and associated development plan.
So move.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Call a roll.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kovaloski?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. So, I need a motion to approve or deny ordinance number eleven-thirty-four, establishing a reinvestment housing incentive district and adopting the development plan for the Riverbend Heights Reinvestment Housing Incentive District.
Don't move.
Nope. I need a motion to approve or deny.
I'm sorry.
I move to approve ordinance number one-one-three-four.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Call a roll.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Can I make comments? Or is it yes or no?
Vote. It's a vote.
Uh, no.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
No.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
No.
Mr. Kovaloski?
Yes.
It's approved. Five-three.
Five-three. Approved.
All right. Motion passed. Item number four is Board of Zoning Appeals appointment. The Lansing Unified Development Ordinance requires a Board of Zoning Appeals to be available for the appeal process to administer matters related by the UDO. Staff recommends appoint Mr. Payne to fill the vacant seat on the BZA. Recommended action is a motion to appoint Brian Payne to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending on April thirtieth, 2028.
Don't move.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion. Call a roll.
Is Brian still on the planning commission?
Mike, yeah. Mike Suazo, who typically has been historically the planning commission's representative, wants to step down.
Say that again about Mr. Suazo to hear.
Mr. Suazo is staying on the planning commission, but wishes to step down as the planning commission's representative on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
On the Board of Zoning Appeals, okay, thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kovaloski?
Yes.
Motion passed. Executive session, consultation with the attorney. I need a motion to enter an executive session for consultation with the attorney for the, for the city, which will be deemed privileged in a attorney-client relationship, KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B-two, for fifteen minutes, beginning at eight-twenty-six and ending at eight-forty-one.
Don't move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kovaloski?
Yes.
Okay. No, 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 no. It just, we needed to close the public hearing.
Get it.
Really, yeah. Thank you. Okay, now I can call a roll.
I have a motion and a second to return to open session. Call the roll.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kovaloski?
Yes.
Okay, we are, have returned to open session. No binding action was taken during the executive session, and we'll go to reports. Any department heads? Nope? Okay, city attorney.
Another reporter.
City administrator.
Little bit of discussion tonight about other projects and things like that. Just to clarify, though, I mean, Riverbend Heights obviously applied for the RHID program, the Fairlane Town Homes did. Monroe Manor was brought up a lot tonight. They're kind of at a different stage in the process. They've submitted a preliminary plat. At the planning commission meeting last night, someone had asked them if they were going to apply for the RHID. They said they're considering it, or evaluating it, or something to that effect. So a lot of people were saying that they're definitely not doing that, that, I'm not aware of that. To my knowledge, I think they're still evaluating it and considering it. So I, I did wanna, want to clarify that. But the other things that people were, were mentioning, we haven't received any site plan or anything from Mr. Shimkey's development, we haven't received any site plan from Epic Estates, so, you know, those, they haven't submitted anything to us, so. On the subject of RHIDs, because I know everyone loves talking about them right now, since there are two that had submitted and one that's considering it, I know at the staff level, we were talking about either making the program more stringent, or possibly doing some type of moratorium on it, and hitting pause on it for right now. You know, obviously, we had, I think, three or four houses built in Lansing the last couple of years. The program was meant to spark housing, it seems to have done that. So we are considering, like I said, whether it's some type of moratorium, or hitting pause, or making the, the program a bit more stringent. So, if you guys have any thoughts on that, let me or Josh know, but, like I said, I think that is something that we are considering, so. And then, one other thing, the National City Manager Conference is in Tampa Bay this October. Wanted to make sure you guys are okay if I go to the City Manager Conference in Tampa Bay.
Well, you can stay here and I'll go to your place.
Just wanting to verify, so I, I haven't been to the national conference in, I think, three years, so I just wanted to verify you guys were okay with that. So I don't go every year, but was hoping to go this year, so. And those, oh, one other bit of exciting information, I believe we'll be getting the new fire truck in August. I know the chief has been keeping us posted on all of that, so we're, we're very excited about that. I think one- I think once we have everything done and finalized, he's going to bring that up and show it to everybody, so that will be...
Let me go for a ride in it?
Yep.
So cool.
Yep. So, and that's all I have.
Okay. Thanks, Tim. We'll go around the horn. Jesse, you're up.
Six inches of rain last night, we didn't want, but what's that gonna do to the id of closing? It's gonna extend that? Are we still on schedule to reopen that, or do you know?
As far as I know, it's on schedule, but it's...
Reopen when?
I think like right before school starts.
But I...
Yeah, I think that's...
I had a gamble.
Yeah.
I talked to Mike, he, he said it didn't impact him.
Did we really have six inches of rain?
Yeah. We closed a week. Yeah.
I had four.
Yeah, I thought we had four.
I had six. Really?
I can verify that, maybe I'm thinking of when the project's done, but I, I thought he told me three or four weeks.
Three or four weeks?
I will double-check on that.
I didn't realize it was gonna be closed that long. I thought the sign said something different, but...
Yeah, I can double-check.
Talking about the gamble one, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Mike Spicklemeyer told me about three weeks.
Okay, I guess I misread the sign there. Okay, that's all I've got.
I think it's total project. Okay.
I'd like to get with you after the meeting, Mayor, to talk about, I was hoping that I'd be able to make some comments. I don't, I know that the community got to make comments, but I don't remember you asking the board if they had any comments. So I'd like to talk, I need to make sure that I understand going forward so that I know when I can and when I can't make a comment on a, on a motion. With that, I agree with Mr. Russell, he brought up a point about the community needs growth. You guys know I haven't been, I haven't hidden the fact that I believe that we need growth. I just didn't want to do it at the expense of the citizens. I, I really wanted a home that our teachers and firemen and police could afford, and I'm concerned that that's not gonna happen when houses are gonna exceed 300,000-plus. The, I think it's a little too much, too fast for the city to take on all the services that's gonna be required. Also, the, it's just a little concerning to me. But I am about growth, and I hope that we'll have other opportunities to approve other developments where RHID will not be in place. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thanks. Dan?
I'd like to thank Mr. Payne for stepping up and volunteering for the Board of Zoning Appeals. And that's everything I've got.
And Carrie?
I have nothing, Mayor.
All right, done.
I'm anxious to see how this port authority and whatever is gonna develop and how they're gonna educate us all and whatever. Over the years, the city has contributed to, to that, to their operating budget, and I haven't seen a lot of return on our dollars to Lansing itself. I'm concerned about that. That's all I got, Mayor.
All right, thanks. Kevin?
Just, I have to apologize for not following procedure and speaking before I was, before it was my turn, so that's all I have.
Gene?
Years ago, Dave Crinkle, for those of you who knew him when he was in a council seat, and I don't know what the issue was, but he's really struggling with it because he wanted to do right by everybody. And his grandfather told him, you can't please everybody all the time, and if you're worried about making people mad in your position, you need to leave. So, for those of you who knew Dave, that was pretty deep coming from Dave. But, and then sometimes the less said, the better. Thank you.
Nothing, I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Call a roll.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
No.
Mr. Kovaloski?
Yes.
Thank you.